Meeting of the Milford Planning and Zoning Board. If we could stand for the pledge and a moment of silence.
We have the flag of the United States in our into the republic which stands one thing to you, under God, individual liberty and justice.
And we have roll call from the left.
Good evening, I'm Brian Collegian.
John Grant.
Scott Merle.
Tom Pansella.
Bob Sady.
Peggy Kearney.
And I'm Jim Kowesh, we are joined by Meg Green and David Sulcus representing the city. Our first order of business is old business, 16 Ross Street Zone, R5, petition of Thomas Lynch Esquire. David, if you would walk us through this bit of housekeeping.
Basically, if the board remembers, at the last meeting, there was a vote taken for 16 Ross Street, which was a change of zone, and the guidance in our green book had a particular vote count that required, that indicated that the vote had failed, when in fact, the vote did pass. So for the record, the zone change did pass, and the effective date is still as it was when the motion was made that day. So it'll be effective 12/17/18.
Is there any action the board needs to take?
None. You actually, you took the action.
Okay, thank you.
Next order of business is 3-5-7 Cherry Street. For the crowd, 43 Irma Street has been postponed by the applicant, so if you are here for that presentation, it's no longer on for tonight. So we have 3-5-7 Cherry Street.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say if you can also let the audience know also that 43 Irma Street won't be on the agenda, and 1040, 1052 Boston Post Road, the proposed regulation change and special permit also has been postponed for that.
Great, thank you. So we have petition of Kevin Crusadian Esquire for special exception for conversion of a dental office to residential units, and a minor lot line adjustment on map 65, block 817, parcels nine and 8A, of which Red Cherry LLC and Moller Manor LLC are the owners.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Kevin Crusadian, I'm representing the applicants. My office is at 3 Lafayette Street here in Milford. With me tonight is engineer Robert Heiza, and also the member of the owner LLCs of these properties and the applicant, Dr. Walter Russo. This is an application, it's an existing site, you're probably familiar with it, it's on the corner of Cherry Street and Prospect Street. The, there are two separate ownerships and LLCs, but the parking is combined for 85 Prospect Street and 3-5-7 Cherry Street. There is an old, there's some old variances that have to do with the parking, there's a parking easement agreement between the two parcels. They're two different LLCs, but they're tied together, and two different properties, but tied together for parking purposes. As part of the application tonight, we have a minor lot line adjustment, and we'll go over that, and Mr. Heiza has the maps up there as well that he can go over, but I'll just give you a little brief history of how we got here. We've been working on it for several months now. We originally filed the application as four additional residential units on the first floor of the Cherry Street building. Presently, or in the past use, it was dental offices. On the second floor of that same building is four residential units, there's two, one bedroom and two efficiency, and we're asking to do the same thing on the first floor, replace the dental offices with two residential, two, four residential units, two one-bedroom and two, and two efficiency units. We originally filed the application for those four additional units, and then we got an administrative sewer approval for three units instead of the four units we were asking for. So when this was on the agenda two weeks ago, we asked that it be tabled, because we had a sewer commission meeting last week where they granted us that additional unit. So now we're back for the full four units, for a total of eight residential units in the building. I can, I don't know if it's helpful, or if you want to ask questions, I can run through the site plan. The site is not changing, other than the lot line adjustment and the residential use. We had originally anticipated that we would have to ask the board for a finding of parking adequacy, because with the four units, under the present day zoning regulations, we were one parking spot under, or too short. However, there's some additional research, and I was only able to locate it and gave it to Mr. Sulcus today, where there was a variance in a parking agreement that reduced the required number of parking spaces for 85 Prospect Street from 10 down to five. So, number one, we think that the parking is adequate anyway, because there's a mixture of dental offices at 85 Prospect Street, and then the residential use at Cherry Street. So the different uses complement each other with respect to parking. We are gonna add a slight buffer on the Cherry Street side, so there is, in addition to the lot line adjustment, one minor change to the property. Otherwise, the property, as you can see from some of the photographs, or if you took a site visit, or you drove by it, there's some beautiful landscaping on it, some trees and some plantings that Dr. Russo takes great pride in, and so we've already, we, we, we well meet the landscaping requirement of it. That's really, it's pretty straightforward.
Could you identify and describe the lot line adjustment?
Yeah, if you're, if you're looking at the paper map next to Mr. Heiza, it is that, yeah.
Oh, good evening, my name is Robert Heiza. I'm a civil engineer and land surveyor, live in Orange, Connecticut, and I'm doing the surveying and engineering work for this project. In order to make the picture a little bit clearer, rather than looking at the diagrams on the wall, I've colored up this exhibit, and the, the area in red is the property line for 85 Prospect Street, and the balance of the property is the property for 357 Cherry Street. I've also highlighted the outline of the building for 357 Cherry Street, and the outline of the building for 35 Prospect Street, just to give you an idea as to what the buildings look like on the property. The parking spaces are essentially what they are right now. There are three parking spaces at 85 Prospect, and there, I think there are 22 spaces on the property for 357 Cherry Street. And we feel as though we're going to be meeting the parking requirements because of something we found in the, in the records on this property, 85 Prospect Street, having been granted, allowing them to only have, I think, five or six parking spaces, and that was back in 1984, or '74. And it was at the zoning Board of Appeals, the owner at the time requested that from the zoning Board of Appeals, and it was granted. So in any case, pretty much feel as though we've met, we're going to meet the requirements for parking. One, one little problem we ran into when I did the survey, was that a part of the deck for 85 Prospect Street was over the line for 357 Cherry Street, and Dave Sulcus recommended that be corrected, and what we'll be doing is, a small portion of 357 Cherry will be conveyed to 85 Prospect Street. The, both properties are owned by Dr. Walter Russo, so there's no problem in having that happen. The... As you, as you, as you know, it's an RO zone, and the buildings were built around 1890, and of course, that predated zoning, so the buildings are necessarily, not necessarily zoning compliant, but they are what they are, and the, the project we feel as though is, is going to work, are going to work out fine. I, I think as Kevin pointed out to you, the, the parking for the two parcels is shared, and all on 357 Cherry Street. The property is not in a flood zone, elevation for the property is, most of it is elevation 40. The, the flood level on the other side of Prospect Street is somewhere around 27, the 100-year flood level, so there's no problem that way. The plans that I submitted with the project are merely to demonstrate that the project is feasible, they aren't construction plans, they're labeled that way, they, they are not construction plans, and it was a requirement of the zoning regulations that these plans be filed. I think you all have copies of all of the floor plans, the elevations of 357 Cherry One thing I added in order to get the total number of spaces was a compact car space adjacent, off of Cherry Street, adjacent to the building on Cherry Street, and that car space is four compact cars, eight and a half by 15 feet. I know it's not in your zoning regulations, but it's a space that Walter had been using, and he even had it painted as a space, so I took advantage of it, and listed it, listed that as one of the, one of the spaces. I, I, an architect will be required for the final construction plans for 357 Cherry Street. I did, I did enough of the work to prepare plans to submit for consideration for the, for the special exception, and, but if, if the special exception is granted, then I hired an architect, and possibly a structural engineer, will have to be hired to do the first floor of the building, and arranging the petitions, some of the petitions might be bearing petitions right now that have to get moved, so that'll all be done by an architect and structural engineer. And as I've said before, both are, both buildings were combined on this single site plan, because they are pretty much married, and what might happen in the future, I'm not sure. This, this little yellow triangle is the amount of land that is going to have to be conveyed in order to put the deck on 85 Prospect Street, all onto the lot that will become 85 Prospect Street. It doesn't affect either one that, all that much, it's about 180 square feet, that had to be, this little triangle had to be conveyed to 85 Prospect, and we will also be doing the work that has to be done to make that conveyance. Zoning requirements, zoning requirements also want us to look at landscaping, and the, property is landscaped very nicely as it is. Dr. Russo, I think his hobby is landscaping in the spring, he's out there working between patients. He took some pictures, and what I'd like to do is perhaps have, have you pass this down, each of you can take a brief look at the landscaping at the site, and I think it's quite effective there, along the property line here, there are dwarf fruit trees and flowering trees, all very nice, there are daffodils and other flowers, tomatoes, other plants growing around 85 Prospect, there's a hedge out along Prospect Street, and the, I think the landscaping at least meets the intent of what you would like to see there. The only other exhibit I had was the floor plan, the proposed first floor plan, showing the two one-bedroom apartment units and two efficiency units, and they all fit in nicely, meeting the requirements for, of at least, it's 500 square, 575 square feet for the bedroom units, and at the, a minimum of 425 square feet for the efficiency units. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Just a quick question, on that, on that one compact car space, I see that it sticks past the driveway entrance somewhat, does that affect a large, a fire truck getting into that property if there was a car parked there?
I, I don't think it would, because the, the driveway, the approach to the driveway, the sidewalk that is, is a driveway cut, is about 24, 25 feet, and I think actually all you need by your requirements are 20 feet for a driveway, so it, that shouldn't be a problem.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I just have copies of those variances from the 1974 that we talked about regarding parking, you have copies, okay.
Mr. Sulcus, any comment?
When, when I wrote my report, it appeared that the applicant was gonna be short a space, and it sounds like through variance, they're gonna have a few extra spaces. And the fire department did review this, and they didn't comment on the compact space, but under our regulations, we wouldn't count that, because it's, it doesn't meet our space requirements.
Thank you. Anything else before I open the public hearing?
I think just for clarification, I think that, I'm not sure whether Mr. Sulcus was saying we would meet it, and we don't need that compact space anyway, or whether that's our position, I just don't know if he agrees with me or not.
Basically, it, it's nice that you have it, you don't need it to meet the parking requirement because of the variances, and if you needed it, then it actually wouldn't, wouldn't qualify as a parking space under our regs, that's all I said.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come up and, and be heard on the issue, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we would, any questions or comments from the board?
This is a question for staff, any other special exceptions in that area that we should be taking into account for, or this be the only one?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you asking about other properties?
Correct.
Whatever has occurred on other properties is not pertinent to what's on this property, so they, I, I can't tell you, since I didn't research, any of the other properties, but even if I had, every property stands on its own.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Mr. Grant?
I move to approve, as presented, the petition of Kevin Crusadian for a special exception for conversion of dental offices to residential units, and a minor lot, eh, line adjustment on map 65, block 817, parcel 09 and 8A, of which Red Cherry LLC and Moller Manor LLC are owners.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any further comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously, thank you. Next item of business is 690 New Haven Avenue, Zone CDD4, petition of Kevin Crusadian for special permit, site plan, with coastal area management review, for an 18-unit housing development on map 68, block 711, lot 10, of which 690 New Haven Avenue LLC is owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Kevin Crusadian, my office is at 3 Lafayette Street here in Milford. With me tonight is the civil engineer on the project, Ron Wassmer. This application, we probably started it about, Ron and I were talking today about 17, 18 months ago, we had to go through wetlands process and approval, which we received, and we, at that point in time, I think we had an additional building that extended further into the approach, or encroached into the wetland setback area, wetlands upland review area. The wetlands commission came out and did a site walk, and they approved it, conditioned upon removing that additional building. There's also a lot of wetlands enhancements and protections that are part of the wetlands mitigation plan that Mr. Wassmer will, will discuss. This project, I think the most important thing to highlight is that from the very beginning, the applicant has wanted to keep this as conventional rental units, it's 18 proposed units at 690 New Haven Avenue, as you know the address, but if you haven't driven by the site, it's near the, now the name escapes me, but it's the new hamburger hot dog place on New Haven Avenue that people have been raving about over the summer, I can't remember, Dogtown, it's a dog, it's, it's a couple of lots away from Dogtown, there's an existing house on the property with an attached garage, and over the years, some different people have been coming in to see me about what they could do on the site, there was a, somebody who wanted to do a commercial garage there, and then there was somebody who wanted to do something else, and none of those were allowed in the zone. This, this application, this project is allowed in the zone, and it's also in compliance with your comprehensive plan and development for the CDD4 district, which this is located in. I recall many years ago, not too many years ago, but back when Gene Servin was chairperson on the board, and there was some other, your predecessors on the board, there was a lot of talk about what to do with the New Haven Avenue corridor and the CDD4, and at that time, the conversation was they would like to see residential uses like this, that people could walk to stores, or walk downtown to the train station, this might be a little bit far from the train station, but when you look at your conservation of plan and development, and the CDD4 district, that's what's expressed, is what the intent is. So the applicant was very adamant from the beginning that it be 100% zoning compliant. As a land use attorney, when somebody comes and asks me what they can do with the property, I give them all the options, there's other different options that are available, I'm sure you're aware of, of whether it's commercial use, or some other form of residential use, and all of those other ones were rejected for this project. So, one of the, in addition to the wetlands removal of one of the buildings, we had a fire department, originally they rejected the plans as submitted, because we didn't meet the code turnaround, it's a dead end, and it wasn't, it was too far from the nearest hydrant, and we worked with the fire marshal, Ron Wassmer, worked with the fire marshal's office, and we are sprinkling each one of the units, which we wouldn't be required to by code, but we're, we're doing that anyway, and the fire department came back with an, with an approval, a full approval, unconditional approval of it. We've submitted a traffic report that says there wouldn't be any detrimental or negative impact to the area, the, it's obviously city wood, water and city sewer, the police department did not have any issues with it, trash removal is gonna be done by a private collector, picking up small cans, I believe is how we're gonna do it at this point in time, and pending any questions, I'll turn it over to Ron Wassmer.
Evening, for the record, Ronald Wassmer, professional engineer and land surveyor with an office at 158 Research Drive, Milford, Connecticut. On the board in front of me here is a colored rendition of the proposed site plan. I do have a couple aerial views I'm gonna flick to for a moment here. This is just from Google Earth, I've outlined the parcel with a, a red area, and you'll see there's a, bounded by New Haven Avenue, and there's a wetlands open space behind the property. One of the things I want to point out right from the beginning is this, this wetlands drains towards Gulf Pond, but as it passes through our, passes past our property, it then becomes piped and it travels underground through these parking lots, over by Furniture Row, and then it comes out, crosses the street, and then discharges into Gulf Pond area. You can see some of the larger commercial properties adjacent to this, this is 40 Pepe's Farm Road, it's a warehouse, this is a building on Furniture Row, predates my history, but I presume it had something to do with furniture at one point. There's a couple of commercial buildings adjacent to our property that were used as a machine shop, body shop, for many years. Thank you. I'm gonna walk through the set of plans that we prepared, and then we'll address any questions that you have. She in front of you, SP1 is the site plan, this demonstrates our compliance with zoning. Again, this is an application for a coastal area site plan, the zone is CDD4, this plan conforms to these regulations. I want to stress the fact, this is not an 830G application that you've seen so frequently over the last few years. We do have favorable review from all the various departments and commissions, early on in the design... Early on in the design process, I did meet with the city planner. We submitted a conceptual plan. We also met with the city engineer and the wetland enforcement officer. We do have wetlands on the property, so we worked extensively with the Milford Inland Wetland Agency to develop a plan that would satisfy their requirements. The parcel is bounded by the southerly by New Haven Avenue, westerly by commercial parcels that are...commercial parcels, northerly by a marsh area, which is part of the Pepe's Farm Road industrial park, and easterly by some open space that belongs to the city of Milford, which was granted as a part of a small residential subdivision at the corner of Pepe's Farm Road and New Haven Avenue. The site driveway is accessed from New Haven Avenue. The proposal's for six buildings comprised of three units per building. They're a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The buildings are three stories. First floor is a garage, storage, and utility area. The second floor is kitchen and living area, and the third floor is bedroom. Building spacing is in accordance with the CDD-4 regulations. And the building spacing on this plan is much greater than the typical townhouse developments that we've been involved in. This is a result of the requirements within the CDD-4 regulation, in contrast to the 8-30G affordable regulations, which 10 feet would be a minimum separation typically proposed. We generally have between 22 and 24 feet between buildings. We propose between two and four parking spaces per unit with an additional 10 visitor parking spaces. This is the grading plan. The parcel is gently sloping from the southwest towards all other directions to the north, to the northeast, and to the east. It's kind of a gradual hillside that slopes down towards the wetlands and then to a marsh area. The brook that I mentioned earlier is sometimes referred to as the New Haven Brook. There's another water course that is a drainage ditch from catch basins from New Haven Avenue that, again, drains towards the northeast of the parcel. A portion of the property does fall within the flood zone AE 11. That's part of our coastal area application. The building floor heights were established to conform with your new regulations just a couple of months ago. You passed a regulation that required that the floor elevations be two feet above the flood zone, so we did submit this prior to that, but I felt that it was important to achieve that, and so we did. On here is a table G1A, and this indicates all the various building heights. Again, they're the typical townhouse units. We've established your average grade plane and thus the separation required for each of the buildings. The driveway grades are relatively gentle, 2.5% from New Haven Avenue down towards the rear of the development. The plan indicates a stormwater drainage system. This drainage system was reviewed and approved by your city engineer, and this drainage system does reduce runoff from the current conditions by 23% through the installation of various catch basins, infiltration galleys, overflows. Several features of the storm drainage system are there to provide water quality assurance. We did do soil investigations to conduct at the on-site. Soils are functional for the storm drainage system. I didn't mention the off-site brook, which is New Haven Avenue, called New Haven Brook, which discharges to the west. It then enters a pipe and runs under the parking lots of the Furniture Row development industrial area. Along this brook is the coastal jurisdiction line. The coastal jurisdiction line is established by the state of Connecticut. It's 1.8 feet above the mean high water line, and it runs more or less right along the edge of the brook. The closest development is building unit 3I, which is about 75 feet to the edge of that coastal jurisdiction line. In general, tidal wetlands fall below the coastal jurisdiction line. We don't have any elevations that would support tidal wetlands on this property. It does have inland wetlands, hence the application with the Milford inland wetlands. In regards to some other grading features, we do have a couple of small retaining walls, one along the westerly property line and a smaller wall over here at the northeastern corner. These walls generally are zero to five feet tall, so we're not talking anything excessive, and these walls help to provide a suitable area for site development and also minimizes the grading adjacent to the wetlands and thus maximizing our wetlands buffer. If we didn't have wetlands buffers that we were trying to support, then we could grade further and would reduce the cost of the development. The site does not require any extensive fill or excavation. We'll be making a small cut along the westerly side and a fill along the easterly side. This is the utility plan. The project's proposed with public water and sewer and all the other utilities, including electric, gas, telephone will be underground. We have two landscaping plans. This landscaping plan is intended to address the zoning regulations. It indicates the proposed trees and the landscaping along the street frontage as well as within the parking lot. We did a completely separate, or not separate, but augmented landscaping plan when we went through the wetland agency. This is...this one's entitled Presentation Plan, but in your package, it's the Wetlands Mitigation Plan. This plan depicts the proposed planting to develop a vegetative buffer between the development and the inland wetlands and the coastal jurisdiction line. Along with the standard landscaping, we've proposed an additional 87 habitat shrubs, 8,000 square feet of wildlife grasses, conservation easement. So I'm just going to walk you through this again. So the driveway shaded in gray, the buildings are in brown. The rest of the development is a lighter green, and you can see all the proposed landscaping features. This darker shade of green here is a conservation easement. This conservation easement restricts this property in perpetuity, that no additional development would be proposed in that area. Then we have another darker shade of green, which is the inland wetlands that fall within our property. The dark, bold line is the property line, so we have the development areas, the building areas, landscape buffers, conservation easement, inland wetlands, and then this area that we shaded in a lighter green and the water course in blue is off of the property. A permanent fence is proposed along the conservation easement. This deters human intervention into the wetland areas. So we have a list of the habitat shrubs that we're proposing in that...along that conservation easement. We also have a maintenance plan on this that...the maintenance plan requires the evaluation of all the existing trees just prior to construction. And the plan states that any trees that we did...that a biologist or a arborist determines that would be susceptible to damage and/or in a weakened state that would be replaced with an inch and a half diameter tree. We...this maintenance plan also discusses maintenance of the storm drainage and the parking areas, biannual sweeping, cleaning of the catch basins, et cetera. Outlines maintenance of the landscaping and the wetland plantings, so they need to be evaluated for two years by the biologists that proposed the habitat species. Jennifer Benno of Soil Science and Environmental Services prepared a report evaluating the wetlands and proposed the plantings for the conservation area. That's part of the record of the inland wetland application. And it also has a statement about snow removal. That comes up as a topic both in the planning and zoning as well as wetlands. So the plan calls that in the event of a large storm...we do have a couple of small areas dedicated for snow removal, snow stockpile. In the event of a larger storm, the snow would be stockpiling a couple of visitor park parking spaces for up to 72 hours and then removed from the site. Sedimentation and erosion control is an important plan with this application. This depicts the features utilized to prevent sedimentation and erosion control. This includes tracking pads entering the site. We're not tracking a lot of mud out to New Haven Avenue. It has silt fence along the perimeter of our development areas. In this particular project, we've also proposed a temporary fence. A silt fence, you know, is about yay high and can easily, you know, be pushed over by workers throughout the construction. So we've proposed a six-foot chain link fence. It's a temporary fence to be installed along the conservation easement. This will prevent workers from inadvertently tromping into the wetlands or leaving debris stockpiled. Upon completion of construction, the temporary fence will be removed and a permanent fence will be placed. We have an illumination plan. This conforms with the requirements of your regulations. A couple of streetlights, all lights inside the parcel. We're not having any excessive lighting leaving the property. We have a couple of detail sheets of the various civil structures to be built. Detail one and detail two, dumpster pad, et cetera, tree planting, parking stripes. Detail sheet three has several cross-sections, one for each building, indicates the building heights relative to the average grade and also shows the flood zone. As I mentioned earlier, we're at a minimum of two feet above the required flood, or it's now the designed flood elevation. There's also details of the two retaining walls. Again, I mentioned they range from zero to five feet tall. Also included, this is an existing condition survey, shows the existing house and the trees that are on the property as well as topography. As part of the application, a question was raised about the volume of earth work that needed to be done. We prepared these cross-sections, indicates existing and proposed grade, the location of the buildings and the driveways. It's more of an engineering exercise to determine how much fill or cut would be conducted to build the project. Again, I had mentioned earlier that there was no excessive cuts or fills. We probably need about 58 truckloads of material to develop this approximately one-acre site, commercial site. So in summary, the proposed development, it conforms to the CDD-4 zone. The proposed development is in harmony with the Milford Plan of Conservation and Development. Again, this parcel was selected in the process of your conservation and development to be a commercial corridor design area. The proposed project addresses the coastal resources as outlined in the coastal area management application. The plan provides buffer to the inland wetlands and to the coastal jurisdiction line. Plan uses sound engineering principles that are...and there's no special construction technique required. Briefly walk you through the building plans. There are six buildings. Again, they're similar in construction. It's a townhouse. You've seen this style before. Lower floor is a garage area. It's either a one- or two-car garage, a laundry area, and a mechanical room. The next floor up is the living room, dining room area. The third floor is one, two, or three bedrooms, depending upon the particular unit. Try to get to a building elevation view. So some of the buildings that face New Haven Avenue will have a stone veneer to enhance the architecture. We have stone veneer along the fronts. This is from the parking lot looking towards the unit. You can see the garage doors, windows. The roof line is staggered. The property, again, as I mentioned, slopes from New Haven Avenue towards the wetlands in the rear. So with each building, we step the floor down progressively, which breaks up the roof line also, helps as an architectural feature. And then as we proceed further into the development, each building is progressively lower in elevation from the previous building. However, we do maintain a minimum of two feet above the flood elevation. And these are the rear elevations. I believe that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Sadie?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Wassmer, and thank you for the presentation. I'm a little bit confused about a couple of things. Maybe you can help me out on this. You indicated that you received approval from all the needed boards and commissions. The approval from the Inland and Wetlands Agency dated December 28th, 2017 indicated that there was a proposed construction of seven apartment buildings with attached...did you change the project after that approval?
No, what we...we did submit seven buildings. What was approved was six buildings.
Okay.
So perhaps they wrote their...
That's fine. Secondly, were you aware of the Milford Tree Commission letter that came in today that indicated they have a problem with the shade trees?
No, I didn't know that this letter came in today. Ironically, I hate to say this, but I will. You know, we did start this about 18 months ago, and lo and behold, we get a report today. I will be happy to work with staff to substitute a different species. In particular, this is a species that I spoke to the city planner about. I'm not going to ask for his comments at the moment, but I've been involved in... I'm not going to ask for his comments at the moment, but I've been involved in landscaping and site planning, and I actually started my career as a forester. And I'm finding it very difficult to find landscaping trees that are, that work. You know, I see commercial developments where the trees don't grow. I see other times, trees that are planted that are way too large. United Illuminating has a nice habit now of coming and taking just about everything within 15, 20 feet of the street. So I respect Kate's comments. I haven't read them thoroughly, but we'll be happy to work with the tree commission.
The last question I had, just could explain to me, so Department of Environmental Protection, September 24th, 2018, letter indicated that they recommended removing Building Six. Is that the six of the six, or is that the one that you said was removed at some later point? Because I'm a little bit unclear in your response, which was November 14th, 2018, to them. If you could just address that issue about their concern, they want the building removed. First, did it get removed from the plans? If not, could you explain their concerns and how it's going to be remedied?
Sure. So, no, we did not remove the building from the plans. It was my opinion that we had satisfied Milford Inland-Wetland Regulations. I don't know that Mr. Goucher was aware that we had gone through the Milford Inland-Wetland Agency. The jurisdiction falls within Milford Inland-Wetland Agency. We worked with them extensively to evaluate the buffers to the wetlands. We did a lot to provide safety safeguards, as well enhancement to the buffers through several of the features I talked about, fencing, conservation easement, plantings. So that's, that's, that's all laid out in my response letter, but that's in the synopsis.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Grant?
I have a question. With the two-bedroom and three-bedroom units going to be on the site, that probably is going to mean that there's going to be some children. I didn't see anything on the plan as a designated area for children to be near that road. It's a pretty heavily traveled road. That would make them safe waiting for a bus. So I wanted to see if that would be something that can be added into there. Also, the other question I had was, was there, did the developer have any thought as far as making at least two of those units affordable units?
First question about the bus, I'm sure that we can develop a safe area for students to wait, should there be any. Second, we did evaluate this project early on as an affordable application, and if we did, we could put more units on here. We could reduce our building separation from 22 and 24 feet down to 10 feet. But we felt, seeing that the, and I'm certain Kevin's going to get up and speak to, because he helps me quite a bit understand this regulation. Since the regulations do permit this type of unit, we felt that it was best to submit a plan that conformed to the regulations.
Mr. Grant, the only other thing I would add to that is that it's been my experience with some developer clients that they start running into problems with financing for construction. If, if this project was going to have an affordable component, we would need to increase the number of units, and that would mean that we would reduce the, we wouldn't follow the setback requirements or some of the other zoning requirements. And the reason for that is, is because the income does not, the site development costs are the site development costs, regardless of whether we're, you know, roughly, you know, because we have to bring in, you have to do the grading and you have to bring in the utilities. So the income from the affordable units does not support construction financing, number one, and it also doesn't allow the, the project to be a viable project unless you increased the, the number of units dramatically. So that's the issue with this, and that's why, or that's the reason why we can't just, you know, make two units affordable, because that won't, that won't really work for us financing-wise.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Salkis?
You have my report. I don't think there's really anything I can add that wasn't already said this evening. If you have any questions about my report, I'd be, you know, glad to answer them.
I do have a question with regard to the DEEP's recommendation of one less unit. I know there was an extensive letter that the engineers sent back in response to the DEEP concerns. Did that letter ever get sent up to DEEP to see that if it's, that the explanation's there within, did satisfy their, their requirements?
I don't have that answer at the moment. I'd have to go through the file to see who it was addressed to. It was addressed to me. I don't know if it was CCED or not to DEEP.
Is that something that would be part of our practice, to have that response reviewed by the DEEP, seeing it was sort of a response to their concerns?
That's our process for our city departments. I don't, I can't say that we require DEEP to respond. The applicant probably has something to say about that.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I had sent this to DEEP on my own volition. It's my understanding after the fact that only some of these CAM applications get sent to DEEP for review, and that this would not have been one of them, is my understanding. But the applicant, it was sent, but I didn't send it with the inland-wetlands approval and showing the wetlands mitigation and all the enhancement and the cleanup of the wetlands. If you walk back on the site, there's a lot of debris and old construction materials and things that are all planned to be cleaned up as part of the wetlands approval and as part of, if this, if this project gets approved. So we did not, I didn't, I didn't send it up to DEEP, so I don't know whether it somehow made its way up to DEEP or not. But that letter was issued by Mr. Goucher without the benefit of having the wetlands approval. I just sent him the zoning application for, for plan review. But I would like to point out, too, that that, we are fully compliant, and we have all the approvals that we need from every agency, both municipal and state, for this project. That opinion, since we're not doing anything below the coastal jurisdiction line, the opinion from DEEP is merely advisory. I did respond to Mr. Goucher by email and asked him to confirm that it was merely an advisory opinion, and I did not hear any response back from him on that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this matter, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any other, and I would accept a motion. Mr. Grant?
I move to approve with the following condition. The petition for Kevin Crusaden for special permit, site plan with coastal area management review for an 18-unit housing development on map 68, block 711, lot 10, of which 690, New Haven Avenue LLC is the owner. Condition would be to include a safe area for children at the street level for bus pickup.
Ms. Salkis?
Do you also want to include as a condition the tree commission's report?
Yes, and I think there's, I think the wetlands had some, two different bonds that they were requiring. Is that automatically included in our approval?
That has to do with them. I mean, that's a condition of approval we always incorporate into the letter, the interdepartmental conditions.
So is it already in force without us including it?
Correct.
Okay. So...
Do I need to add the tree, Ms. Salkis?
Yeah, you should amend your motion to include a condition, however you want to word it, about, you know, the applicant will work with the city planner to incorporate the conditions as spelled out in the tree commission report dated 12/4/18.
I amend the, my approval to include the additional condition that the developer worked with the city planning department to meet the tree commission's requirements in their letters that were dated, sorry.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? So, any discussion?
The only discussion I had is just with the motion, with, we're creating a safe zone. Do we have to define that, or is that just going to be something that's talked about?
Yeah, please, you can, you can respond.
I'll be happy to prepare a sketch that I can review with the city planner of an area where we can provide a bus, not a public bus, but a bus area for children.
Or like a school bus?
Yes.
Right. Okay, that sounds good. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Sadi?
Thank you, Mr. Kish. I still have a concern on the Department of Environmental Protection and the issue of Building Six. I'm not satisfied that that's been resolved at this point.
I think that the position of the applicant is that they are going with, going with the six-building presentation, so if you're not in favor of it, I understand. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Ms. Sadi opposed.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, did you have a second to Mr. Grant's motion?
Okay, next item on the agenda is 0 and 990, Nogatuck Avenue, petition of Jeffrey Gordon for a change of zone from HDD to WDD on map 40, block 300, lots 2 and 3B, of which Recycling
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, staff, my name is Jeffrey Gordon. I'm president of Co-Despoty and Associates. I'm a land use planner and licensed landscape architect here in the state of Connecticut doing business at Co-Despoty and Associates, 263 Boston Post Road in the town of Orange. With me this evening is attorney Frank Pilasey and Mr. John Geds, representing Caswell Cove and also Primrose Properties. We were before this commission a while back to get permission to make an application for the zone change without the full application of a site plan at the time, but we were able to go forward with some of the concepts that we want to, to share with you as well, to show what the zone change would, would bring about. Following a zone change application, we also have a zone text amendment on the agenda. I don't know if you want me to present concurrently or not, but I can present one and then go into the other. That would be up to you folks.
Ms. Salkis, do you have an instinct on that?
I think each one should be handled separately to keep the record clear.
Thank you. We will hear them secondary on advisory staff.
Okay, very good. So the parcels that we're talking about here, looking at the whole land use map, I did spend some time in your, your plan of conservation and development. We have a residential area that is highlighted and a very, very small area joining it, which is what we're before you with today. The parcel to the north of us is a WDD district. Very much at the top of the page is the Caswell Cove. The area between the Caswell Cove development and the subject property is also a portion of Caswell Cove. It is a section of Caswell Cove that was approved a number of years ago but not built. That is something that is the genesis of this zone change application. In order for them to fully develop that section, they're looking to see the change in zone of this section of Husatonic Design District land that's adjacent to the power plant that is the site of Recycling Inc. There are a number of planning considerations that we keep in mind when, when you're looking to change a zone. You do have the plan of conservation development. You have an introduction in it which goes to a number of items. Just as a measure of housekeeping, I did already present to Chairman Kish the certificates of mailing, the return receipts, and a photo of the posted placard that was done according to the statutory requirements. In looking at the goal of your plan of conservation development, the obligation by Connecticut general statutes is to have something that has a statement of policies and goals and standards, of which the zoning commission will adapt, regulations that will meet the planning initiatives. Certain things that were, are goals that are to be looked at as expansion of housing opportunities and design choices to accommodate a variety of household types and needs, conservation and restoration of the natural environment, protection of environmental assets critical to public health and safety, to make provision for the development of housing opportunities, including multifamily dwellings, consistent with soil types, terrain, things of that nature, found on page 11 of your P O C D. Page 12, following through, again, promoting housing choices and economic diversity in housing, and also focusing on development and revitalization in areas with existing or planned physical infrastructure. So revitalization of an underutilized piece of property is something that we're speaking to today. In addition, due to Milford's location adjacent to the Long Island Sound, the plan must also show that it's consistent with the Coastal Management Act, considers restoration and protection of the ecosystem and habitat of Long Island Sound, and reduces hypoxia pathogens, toxic contaminants, floatable debris in the Long Island Sound. The applications were referred to Mr. Goucher at DEEP. They had a little bit of a calendar issue, I guess we could say. The gal who had it thought that her 35-day referral period had run out, hadn't run out. They had another week and a half to go. We talked, and then it went over to Mr. Goucher. Mr. Goucher called Mr. Salkis, and he's taking a look at it, but he is not going to be able to get to the site till a week from today. So that's just something that you can take under advisement. I've been communicating, David has been communicating with John at length here because of the unique nature of this particular piece of property. I showed you the land use map from your P O C D, and it ties in with page 15, where it just identifies the distribution of things in town to the west along the Husatonic River. Utility generation and distribution facilities serving the region can be found at that particular location. Other things that are targeted are greenways and green belts. It makes mention of the Husatonic River corridor, the Lower Turkey Hill Brook Green Belt. It makes note of the fact that there is limited public access points to this water body and land along the river because it is predominantly privately held. Now, the CAM Act now requires there be efforts for water-dependent uses. Part of the application here that would come with an actual site plan would be restoration, repair of the bulkhead. There would be opportunities for public access, public dock, fishing overlook, things of that nature. That would be part of the recommendations that would come from CAM, and it would be under your purview in the CAM application for the actual site plan application moving forward as well. Other things of note about this area, on page 114 of the Plan of Conservation Development, it makes note of this corridor. It says, "Milford has a host of major utility facilities that call the city home. These are predominantly located in the..." These are predominantly located in the industrial area near the Husatonic River. As more heavily industrial and manufacturing uses that require truck traffic have moved across, moved to areas with better highway access, specifically Woodmont Road and Old Gate Lane off of exit forty, the utility companies have become good neighbors with relatively low traffic generation and clean, well-run facilities. Later on, it says that the city should continue to support the utility corridor that's developed in this area and continue to promote those heavy industrial users going to the sites closer proximity to direct highway access. Also to note is that Nogatuck Avenue, as right now the current truck route to get to Route One into the highway goes through residential areas, so we could see the benefit of getting that kind of industrial use out of that area over to the other areas that were mentioned and to get a different kind of traffic generation away from that intense truck traffic generation. The Plan of Development requires consistency with the state and regional plan of conservation and development. Again, some of those points, development priorities that the city's plan has to administer is expand housing opportunities and design choices to accommodate a variety of household types and needs. You're familiar with this. You've heard this just before I got up here, obviously. Conserve and restore the natural environment, cultural and historic resources, traditional rural lands, protect and ensure the integrity of environmental assets critical to the public health and safety. That takes us to some of the management principles in your Plan of Development. Under Growth Principle One, again, one of the items, number five, is remediate, redevelop, and reuse brownfields and significant vacant or underutilized facilities that are in strategic locations. This property here with recycling is an impacted property. It's impacted soils. It is in a area that's adjacent to the river, so it is a critical asset there. And the response from the Plan of Development is that, yes, this should be done by the municipality for municipal land and done by private property owners for their own land. And we agree that that is something that should be handled by the private sector on privately owned land. That information is found on page one thirty-eight of your Plan of Development. Growth Management Principle Two, support local efforts to develop appropriate urban infill housing and neighborhood amenities to make better use of limited urban land. And it agrees to do that and it says that can be done through flexible zoning. So, that's why the Plan of Development is incumbent upon the zoning commission to have flexible zoning that allows you to achieve those goals. It also says encourage and promote access to recreational opportunities, including trails and greenways for affordable and mixed income housing. And you might be familiar with this, but probably not at this scale, is we have the Sikorsky Bridge pedestrian and bike lane, Milford Bike Trails, the complete streets expanding Milford's bike and pedestrian network. And we do have a Nogatuck Avenue trail that comes down and it comes right almost adjacent to this property, that this is something that would be in harmony with that. I will leave this for you. Also, which was submitted to the commission through staff, and it was also submitted up to Mr. Goucher, is the requisite fiscal impact analysis that was prepared by the Turner Miller Group out of Wallingford, Connecticut, and I believe Ryan, New York. And this has a number of items here that really tie into this. In talking about zoning in the area, it says the subject property is currently zoned Husatonic Design District. The HDD permits industrial uses as permitted and regulated within the industrial districts except for truck terminals. The HDD also permits boat clubs, yards, and marinas, hotels, motels, and extended stay hotels by special use. Although not designated within the Milford Zoning Regulation, Section eight dash thirty-G provides for the development of affordable housing as defined in the statute, the provisions of the Affordable Housing Appeals Act apply within industrial zones if the municipal zoning regulations permit residential uses within the district. Recent court decisions have ruled that hotels are considered residential since the regulations for HDD do permit hotels, motels, and extended stay hotels. Affordable housing development would be permitted in the HDD zone. Also checked with Agent for the Housing Authority and Milford Housing Authority, when there's been fire damage, water damage, other type of damage, has relocated people into area hotels already, so there is some principal recognition of that residential use. So, we have the issue of the density. The fiscal impact talks about alternative developments, the proposed development, which would not be affordable housing. This is, we're looking for a partnership here with this zone change and the text amendment. And there was a fiscal impact analysis done comparing existing use and affordable housing use and a proposed use. There's a number of items about revenues that are found in the report, page three, page four, the tax revenues, total revenues per dwelling unit, comparing the one-bedroom market rate, two-bedroom market rate, three-bedroom market rate, and then the affordable units, what they would do. Also, there is a analysis about school enrollment from the State Department of Education. School enrollment has been dropping since two thousand three, two thousand four school year, averaged seventy-six twenty, down to fifty-six eighty-one. It's been declining over the past fifteen years, like other Connecticut communities, declining over twenty-five percent since two thousand three, two thousand four. Although schools have been closed and staff reduced, any new students resulting from any new residential development will not be enough to match the natural declines which have occurred. It speaks to the grants that have been given for students and whatnot and addresses what that is. What I really would draw your attention to on page six of the fiscal impact study is the overall fiscal impact analysis by unit type. One-bedroom units within five-plus units per building has a fiscal impact of adding to the town nineteen hundred and thirty-seven dollars annual. A two-bedroom would be fourteen ninety-seven, whereas three-bedroom attached has a deficit of twenty-nine hundred. Three-bedroom affordable eighty percent would be a deficit of almost thirty-two hundred. And we're frightened to look at what that sixty percent number is. That's a real net loss. But looking at the existing use, the current assessed valuation of both properties, it talks about the parcel B, two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, parcel two is six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, so the value is nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. The proposed development would, on page number seven, a net fiscal impact of three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars would come about, and an affordable would be a negative impact of almost four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The existing conditions, there's a net positive of twenty-five thousand dollars. There's discussion about a number of other things here, but I just probably would focus on the appendix B on page ten, waterfront location for industrial use. It says waterfront land was a desirable site for many industrial enterprises during the nineteenth and early twentieth century. It was needed for industries which shipped goods by barges or other vessels. Very few contemporary businesses are based upon water transport. Water shipment of goods is now done through established ports along the coast. According to United States Department of Transportation Bureau of Transportation Statistics, sixty-six point one percent of all domestic shipments in two thousand fifteen, as measured by value of product shipped, were by truck, only nine point two percent by rail and three point four percent by water. Other water-dependent uses, used water for cooling. Most industrial, contemporary, or future industrial uses which require cooling do so through electronic onsite-based systems. This has largely been replaced by onsite electronic cooling systems, the exception being electrical energy generation plant, although some of the newer plants are not situated along large water bodies. So, we find our power plants along the rivers because they barged in coal and they dumped superheated water out into the rivers as well. So, that was one of the reasons why they were located there through the years. But that really would cover the fiscal impact analysis. But again, just looking at the property here, it is a continuation of the property to the north, the waterfront design district. The parcel really just contains a number of abandoned buildings and things that are old tanks, things of that nature, and it is something that would need remediation. We also would have to have an improvement of the accessway along, over the railroad that would require a new gate, and that is a multi-year process. And as we mentioned before, we really can't start that process until we're zoned, and we're trying to have the chicken and the egg conundrum here to get that point. At this point, there is a right-of-way for Caswell that comes across the property, and such an emergency access would be improved, and then we would have a full access which would apportion traffic through both properties. Now, what we're looking at is for the final phase of Caswell would be the development of a number of townhouse units there. It would be less than what was actually approved, somewhere around forty-five, and I think there were sixty left in the original approval. But that, for that to go forward, this unknown commodity of ever being a heavy industrial recycling plant again needs to be addressed, which is why they've come forward with the zone change application. The future plan, along with the regulations that will be discussed after this, talks about what we would be able to develop there in a mid-rise development. Well, not part of this application, this gives you an idea of what, how the final phase of Caswell would be developed. This is the end of Caswell. We would be extending here, coming through to the area where we're looking to change the zone and coming through with emergency access through here to the south. So, that's pretty much all I have to say about the zone change application to change your map. We do believe that it generally is in harmony with the adjoining lands. Right now, it's an isolated, light industrial use. Your Plan of Development has noted that those uses should move out of that corridor. The real question is, do you want to expand a power plant north or you would like to extend the residential south?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Sadi.
Thank you. I want to go back to the fiscal impact study. You referred us to page six, seven, and eight, and if you can go through this again, I'm a little bit confused by this because indicates on page six to seven that the total annual revenues is twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. Where does that figure come from?
I really couldn't acoustically...
Page seven, it starts at page six, but top of page seven, total annual revenues is twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-nine. Where does that figure come from? Is that tax dollars? Is that profit for the owner of the property? I don't know what the number comes from.
I believe that's tax revenues.
Tax revenue, okay. Then we get to the next portion of that. If the proposed program goes through on page seven, the net tax revenue is going to be three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-ten? Three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand. Is that what you're telling us?
That's what, that's what he extrapolated out based on the schematic plan that we have developed.
And then if there's affordable housing goes up on page eight, there's going to be a net loss of four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Who is the net loss to, please?
It is in valuation of the property. Fiscal impacts, if you go back early on, it talks about fiscal impacts to the community. Tax revenues, costs of education, costs of infrastructure improvements, costs of public services, things of that nature.
So, you'd agree with me logically, if we approve this program and it is eight-thirty eligible, the city could lose four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand, six-hundred dollars. Is that what this fiscal impact tells us logically?
If somebody came in with an affordable housing application that really pushed the three-bedroom use, that would have a very negative impact.
Very negative. The term, the numbers here, four-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars, that's very negative, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Salkis? Okay, so you have my... I'm sorry, were you not finished with your presentation?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Franklin Pilacy, three sixty-five Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut. I'm a land use attorney in Connecticut for many years, and I am here tonight in support of the application on behalf of Caswell Cove condominium.
I'm sorry, we've not opened a public hearing yet. If you're on the, if you're on the developer's team, then you can speak now. If not, you'll just have to wait a couple minutes.
Well, I'm sort of both, but I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Salkis?
You have my report in front of you. You heard a lot this evening about the Plan of Conservation Development and all the good things it encompasses, but what this really comes down to, and it's here in the report, that the Plan of Conservation and Development identifies the utility company uses in the industrial zones along the Husatonic River and the utility corridor. And again, you heard about page one fourteen. The P O C D states the city should continue to support the utility corridor that has developed in this area and continue to promote more intense traffic generation uses to sites in closer proximity to the direct highway access. Immediately adjacent to Zero and nine ninety Nogatuck Avenue is a major electrical generation facility. So, the expansion of the WDD zone into the HDD zone appears not to comply with our Plan of Conservation Development. Simple as that.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak, please state your name and address in speaking of the microphone. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes, and those in favor will come first, please.
Again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, Franklin Pilacy, three sixty-five Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut. I'm a licensed land use attorney in Connecticut, have been for many years, and I represent the Caswell Cove Condominium Association. There are a significant number of owners, members of the Caswell Cove community here tonight that are also here because they support this application. The existing recycling property has negatively impacted the Caswell Cove Association and its members for many years. The real and perceived environmental conditions of the property have impacted negatively the nature of the recycling use, which still theoretically hangs over this property. There's been a longstanding stalemate over the actual use of the property, and as stated by Jeff, the Caswell project, as originally approved and authorized, is still far from complete. And part of that, and probably all of that, is due to the fact that the area on Caswell that is not developed is immediately adjacent to the, this recycling center. So, it would seem to Caswell that an opportunity to clean... So it would seem to Caswell that an opportunity to clean up this brownfield-type property and get rid of the adverse use that has gone on there and the potential for some similar adverse use to resurface would be a good thing for Milford, but it would be very good for Caswell. So on behalf of Caswell Cove, we urge that this application be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of this petition?
Can you see me? Hello. I'm Dottie Bateman. I am the president of the Caswell Cove condo association, presently in my fourth year. I moved in, I moved in 25 years ago. I missed all the town, you know, the high-tension wires and the transfer plant, the water treatment plant, you name it. All of Big Drive is loaded with factories. And, look, we knew what we were getting into when we moved in. Now, in the meantime, everything's worked out beautifully until this whole recycling business came up, because that would be directly in our backyard. So far, we've managed very, very well. As a matter of fact, we have 204 units. We house approximately 400 taxpayers who pay well over $5 million in taxes to the city of Milford. If we can develop the 44 units that we're asking for this property to be turned over for, you would get an additional quarter of a million dollars in taxes. And we're people who pay our taxes, so it's unlike some of the other residents in that entire section that we're talking about tonight. We can cover that. Our developer would like very much to get in there and clean it up, take care of everything, get this, as our lawyer said, this noose out from, you know, around our necks, and get on with business. If for any reason that should start to develop again as a recycling plant, I think our property values would go straight down, because then we would be totally surrounded by some sort of treatment center or the factories up and down Big Drive. That we have, that's our backyard. And if our 44 units can be developed, it would be developed right there. If recycling comes in, then we can forget about it. It just won't happen. And we're very much in favor of our developer, John Geddes, to develop this property for us. So I'm hoping that you take this into consideration and realize that we love Milford, we're very active in this community, we're all good, solid citizens and taxpayers, and we really care. And I'm hoping that you will consider this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor?
My name is Patricia Shine, and I've been living at Caswell for 15 years now. We have an ongoing issue, although, Dottie...
I'm sorry, could you give the actual address?
My address? I don't know who's asking.
Yes, please, your address.
Oh, 531 Pope's Island Road.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. My biggest concern is, since I've been living there, there have been issues of air quality, mostly odor, and over the years, from the treatment plant and from the recycling plant, the water treatment plant. So my understanding is that from the water treatment plant, that's been taken care of, I don't know if 100% or not, but there's an ongoing intermittent issue of foul odor in the air. And so if this land or property has another industrial recycling, certainly, or other kind of facility built there, I'm concerned about more odors in the air being a problem. We have been instructed ongoingly from our board, and I don't know if it's from the attorney, but to contact the local and state departments of environmental protection when we individually smell odors in the air. And so this is still an ongoing problem. So I don't want more odors being a problem in the air. So that's my biggest concern. Also, for the past 15 years, I kept hearing about, from our association, this piece of our land that Caswell Cove owns being developed. And I don't know why, over the years, it hasn't been developed. Evidently, there have been different developers that have considered it, and so I don't know the reason factually why that hasn't gone through yet, but I would think that it probably has something to do with what's being presented today about this area being industrial zoned. So I would like the zoning changed, because I would like to see this go through, and I don't want to be subject to more potential issues in the air or otherwise. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Taylor, 1431 Windward Road in Milford. I'm a Caswell Cove resident and also a director on the board of Caswell Cove. I don't want to take a lot of the board's time, because I would echo all the previous comments that are made. I know there are a lot of residents here, and our purpose in being here is really to express our support for these petitions, and I hope that you'll give it favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Shokai, and my address is 623 Pope's Island Road in Caswell Cove. And I also want to support and approve this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie Weinstein, and I live at 121 and 131 Pope's Island Road. I think I'm one of the few original owners left from, we bought pre-construction. And I saw the original designs for this complex and the whole development project, and I've been waiting since 1988 to see this happen. And it's been very frustrating over the years. Those were in the original plans for this land to be developed. And I don't know what's held it up all these times, but we put up, as they said, with the odors coming from next door. And what a wonderful thing to have this land developed for residents and to have these kind of taxes for Milford. I've lived here a long time, and I love it, and pay my taxes regularly, and I hope this goes through.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Henry Osheski. I live at 812 Pope's Island Road. I moved to Caswell Cove nine years ago. The first time I saw it, I actually fell in love with the place. I didn't even argue. I said, "We're going to buy, and that's it," and it's gotten better and better. There are issues with the odor coming from the recycling plant, the water treatment facility, and every time I pass Nogatuck Avenue on 990, and I look at that disaster that's there, I say to myself, "Why can't something be done to beautify it?" And from what I understand and what I know, the developer wants to rip that all out and make it a beautiful place for the city of Milford and for the residents of Caswell Cove. And I greatly appreciate your approval of the zoning change. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Betsy Ratner, 1423 Windward Road. To me, it's a simple, very essential thing. Do we want people, or do we want a mess? And I think, to me, the issue is, what is 2018 compared to? I forgot what year you said when we had the reason why we needed the water power or the water use or for drainage or having that location. Man, we're nowhere near that now in 2018. This is a whole different time. So our brain needs to change, and we need to look at things a little bit differently. I can see the value of industrial. My husband was an architect, and commercial and residential, but tax base and quality of life, uh-uh. I'm totally for making the change, and I hope you really consider strongly not keeping it industrial, but making it residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Kuba. I live at 514 Pope's Island Road, and I just want to voice my support for the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Corvie Wham. I live at 713 Pope's Island Road. I don't know if it helps to have 20, 40 more people get up, but again, I do support this. I've actually lived at Caswell Cove for 25 years, you know, as far as, you know, the borders go. And you want to make sure you know who's going there, and, you know, we've had problems not just with smell, but actually with chemicals coming through the property, which had to be remediated and are still being remediated to this day. So again, it's all about making sure that we try to protect what is there, and this is one more way to make sure that the property stays as good as it can be. And again, I want to support this project and hope you guys will pass this. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie G. I'm in unit 1124 Windward Road. And I have to say that, you know, making the town much nicer to look at. I drive down River Road and 110, and I look across, and it's pretty ugly, except for Caswell Cove. And I think replacing this recycling plant with some beautiful homes will certainly make Milford more beautiful.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Cittarella, and I live at 1236 Windward Road at Caswell Cove. And I just want to go on record as saying that I am also for this zoning change going through and adding to our beautiful Caswell Cove complex. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rhoda Myers. I live at 628 Pope's Island Road. I've lived there for 26 years, and I can remember my husband and I driving down, crossing the railroad track, and I saying, "Why would I want to live here?" And then we moved on into the sales unit, looked out at that cove, and we fell in love with it. It is a beautiful place. We want to maintain its beauty. We want to expand its beauty. We do not want anything to detract from our place of residence, and we would all appreciate your vote, your positive vote on our request.
Thank you.
My name is Tatiana Murphy. I live at 538 Pope's Island Road. I am also the treasurer of the Caswell Cove Association. I am for this. I think it would be a great improvement for all of us, not only for Caswell Cove, but for the city. I think the use of the property right now is not cohesive to what we really want to have for the city of Milford, and I thank you for thinking about this, and we look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Monis, and I'm from 525 Pope's Island Road in Caswell Cove, and I am also in agreement with enhancing our area, and I vote for changing the zoning. Thank you. We love Caswell Cove. We want to enhance it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ian Kelna, and I am at 1137 Windward Road. I'm fairly new to Caswell Cove, unlike some of the other people that you've heard here, but my experience walking, going to the spot for the first time, was pretty much the same. A lot of people have a long history here of living here and loving it, and my wife and I are part of the next generation, and, you know, we want to see it continue and be beautiful, as well as be a great contribution to Milford as well. So I'm in supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Collins. I live at 813 Pope's Island Road, and I think this is a win-win situation for everybody here. It's a little piece of heaven down there. I moved down there about two years ago, take good care of our property, and we'd like to make this piece of heaven a little bit better, you know? It just wouldn't make any sense just to surround us all the way around by some industrial stuff, and it doesn't have to be that way, you know? But it'd be good. I'd love to see this proposal go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor would like to speak? Seeing none? Anyone opposed?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Olson, and like Franklin, I'm a land use attorney. In fact, we've had some matters together. I just wanted to note, we did file a notice of protest. I don't know, I left it for Mr. Sulcus? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that they were aware of that. I also have a memo that I'd like to hand out. I represent Devon Power LLC, located at Nogatuck Avenue, right next door to the property. So again, my name is Carrie Olson. I'm an attorney with Murtha Kalina. My principal office is at 185 Assalem Street in Hartford, but we also have an office on Church Street in New Haven. As I said, Devon Power LLC owns the property that is directly adjacent to the property. That's the subject of this proposed zone change. I also understand that you want to take the matters one at a time. The zone change first, the text amendment second. My memorandum kind of mushes them together. I'm going to try really hard to stick just to the zone change, but I will want to address the commission on the second half when it comes up. So the first and foremost I want to say, and so I'm going to be taking these a little bit out of order, to all of the people in this room from Caswell Cove, I want to say to them that Devon Power does not condone or support re-establishing the recycling facility. They take no position on that whatsoever. What Devon Power's concern is, is having a residential use directly abutting its industrial use. And the reason for that, and I think it's been affirmed tonight from everybody you've heard, is that residential uses directly next to industrial uses are not really compatible. And you have created, as part of your planning process, what I'd like to consider an industrial zone, but it's also a transitional zone, right? Your HDD zone allows for less intense transitional uses that buffer high-intensity industrial uses from residential uses. Some of the examples are marinas, hotels, there's a number of other provisions under your regulations that allow for an appropriate buffer between an industrial use or utility use and a high-intensity residential use like the one that's being proposed here. So again, they're not condoning the recycling facility. In fact, our research indicates that there's some serious problems with that property, which is another reason why we don't recommend it for a residential use. You've heard tonight that the DEP has not weighed in yet. A residential use may never even be approved for that property, so that's another reason to not jump right headlong into a zone change. And I wanted to just, again, point out that you have designated this an HDD industrial zone for good reason, and it's because it's consistent with your plan of conservation and development. And it helps... And it helps support the utility uses that, as you've heard quoted by the applicant themselves, is a significant part of your plan. So if you change the HDD zone to a WDD zone, you're going to allow uses, especially a high-intensity residential use, that is not necessarily compatible with the industrial uses, much less Devon's continued use of its property. So as you know, from a planning perspective, you've got pretty broad legislative powers, right? You have the right to use your discretion. And it's only circumscribed by a couple of things that you have to think about. One is your comprehensive plan, which is your existing zoning scheme, meaning the existing designation of the HDD and the purposes behind it. And then you also have to think about your plan of conservation and development. And again, I'm not going to be repetitive. I've quoted the provisions of the plan of conservation and development that suggest that changing this to a WDD is not consistent with your plan. You've heard Mr. Sulkis affirm that based on your plan of conservation and development. So I ask that you read the memorandum, because I don't want to spend a lot of time going over things that we've already talked about. But what I did want to say to you is, when you put residential uses next to industrial uses, there are, what comes with it is, in general, problems that need to be, that can impact the industrial uses that are pre-existing. You heard people talking about the fact that they came here, they're surrounded by industrial uses, they're already complaining about odors, right? They're complaining about air quality. Their, Caswell Cove itself has been impacted by the industrial uses to the north. From my understanding, they have had issues with environmental contamination in the cove. They have been subjected to other environmental contaminants like TCE in their groundwater and in their basements. These are all the things that dictate that residential uses really just aren't compatible as neighbors to industrial uses. That's why a transitional zone is part of the good planning process. And you recognize that. You've already done that. So we recommend that you maintain your stance on that. I would also point out that citing residential uses next to other industrial uses can create nuisances where none previously existed. Where industrial uses sitting side by side didn't complain about one another, now you've got the issues of noise, odors, lights, environmental exposure, all of the things that residential uses look for, for quality of life, as you've heard. In the Caswell Cove situation, those nuisances led to a number of lawsuits, negligence lawsuits, nuisance trespass. The bottom line is that industrial and residential uses side by side just really don't make good neighbors. And, you know, I think the fact that Caswell Cove residents have said, "We have been waiting for years to develop the remaining part of our property because nobody wants to live next to recycling," basically proves my case. Residential uses don't want to be sited next to high-intensity industrial uses. And so we say to you that there may be an appropriate transitional use that's compatible with Caswell Cove, and that still supports your plan of conservation and development, without bringing along with it the nuisances that Devon Power is concerned about. And I'm going to say that Devon Power wouldn't have me here today if they didn't firmly believe that having a residential use smack next door would have an impact on their operations. And I wanted to just, you know, point out to you that Devon Power not only supplies power to the grid, who supports all of us, they're part of the emergency network. When there's a grid overload, they're part of the process of supplying energy when there's a blackout or any other type of emergency situation. They're also a significant taxpayer in this town, as well as an employer. So they contribute a great deal and are very concerned that bringing residential uses in is going to impact their ability to continue to operate, or thwart their ability to expand or fully use their property. Now, if a residential use goes right next door, the immediate concern for Devon is, what does that do to us as far as our buffering from a residential use, right? You have to look to your regulations. They could be relegated to a pre-existing non-conforming use because they're not far enough away from a residential property. That could impact their ability to expand, to upgrade, or to even maintain. Other concerns that they have about this development is the fact that they have to comply with other regulatory requirements, state and federal, that change when you sit next to a residential use. Examples are air quality, security. They also have very significant concerns about the nuisance, potential nuisance claims, about odor, or noise, or lights. Devon Power needs to be able to operate 24/7. And when a residential use comes in next door, things like noise ordinances, light pollution, all of those things that they fear may then suddenly be imposed on them, will have a direct impact on their ability to maintain and operate the facility 24/7, which is critical. It's critical not just to Milford, but to the energy grid generally. They submit energy to ISO New England, and I am not an energy geek by any means. I should tell you that I have with me here today Nick Palderno, who is the plant manager. So if you have specific questions about how it all works, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. But basically, ISO New England is responsible for making sure energy is supplied virtually up and down New England. So Devon really is a, not only a good neighbor, it's a good regional neighbor. And again, as your plan of conservation and development says, should be a use that's supported going forward, not thwarted. So again, I ask that you do read the memorandum. I will address the text amendments as well. But we ask that you deny the application for the zone change because it doesn't comply with your comprehensive plan or your plan of conservation and development.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant has a right to rebut?
Mr. Chairman, I thought that there might have been one or two who were not quick enough to get up, whom I wanted to speak in favor, but I don't know if that...
Sure, I'll hear everybody. Is there someone else that didn't get up quickly enough? Not a problem.
I'm Jeanne Zianciola. I live at 624 Pope's Island Road, Caswell Cove. I've been there for a short time. And I just think even the traffic that we get, truck traffic and all that, is an abomination. But what are we going to do? So we don't need an extra industry in the area, and it would be nice to be a little more residential. And I hope you take that into consideration and just think, how close do you want to live to the dump? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to go back to a couple of points, back again on the plan of development, context is important here. If we just take out the one line there that says, "The city should continue to support the utility corridor that has developed in this area and continue to promote more intense traffic generation uses to sites in closer proximity to direct highway access." That last sign about promoting intense traffic generation to uses to other sites near the highway, my reading of that whole paragraph on page 114 is that is in harmony with the fact that heavy industrial uses had moved away from that area to the highway, and they want to continue to support that use away from there. Supporting the utility corridor does not necessarily mean expanding the utility corridor. It means we support it. We make sure that the infrastructure is there, that the roads are adequate, that buffers are there, that need to be there. And development of this site as a WDD does allow for buffers to be included in there, berms, trees, things of that nature. Part of your plan of development is not to be contradictory. And to interpret that this is not in harmony with the plan of development, when it says to move the industrial out of the area, take that industrial, heavy, intense traffic away, but then at the same token say, leave it the way it's zoned, that would be contradictory. When your plan of development has a targeted Noggettuck Avenue bike trail that goes right by the access road here, but I'm not able to have a residential component that utilizes it, that's kind of contradictory too. So obviously, what we're talking about is significant. It has been my experience that industrial users don't like to have residents near them. Extra eyes do protect resources. When people are watching what's going on in industrial properties, they behave better. So in some respect, that's a good thing. Concern residents nearby does not mean that you're incompatible. To say that the HDD is a fully transitional zone, I don't think so much. I think it's still an industrial zone. It allows a lot of heavy industrial uses when the plan of development says that those uses have moved away and they should continue to promote those uses to sites in closer proximity to direct highway access. So I think that that, you know, is a little bit of a misnomer to say that it's not in harmony with the plan of development. Either way, somebody is living next door to an industrial property here. Either the ones who live there now, or the ones who would move in. When we design a new complex here, we're able to design it in such a way with buffers in a manner and with viewscapes that would make good use of the river. Thirty-some-odd years ago, I was part of a development team. This was a competition to buy this property from the Beard family. And we had worked for a fellow out in New York, and the plan was, was to build low-rise buildings around the basin there with a marina. And he had two high-rise buildings that were trapezoidal in shape, that were along the river's edge, that looked out at the river, but did not look and see the power plant at all. Architecturally, they were able to do that, to make good use of the views that were out there. So the reason for industrial to be there, the river, the barges, the coal plants, the cooling towers, those things are beneficial, but they're not the end-all, be-all. CAM does require us to have water-dependent uses, water access, recreational amenities, things of that nature, and this is a good opportunity to it. Our attorney is correct about the cleanup requirement. You have multiple tiers of cleanup for impacted soils. One, you'd get to a parking lot level, the other you'd get to an industrial level, and then you have to go the higher level for residential. We have to achieve that. The ultimate density of development would be determined by the amount of effort and the level to make it clean to a residential level. But it is private industry that is more likely to be able to do that. This developer has done similar work across the river in Shelton, impacted soils, extensive cleanups, railroad crossings. He is not new to this, and he has experience in dealing with it. So again, we appreciate your consideration to the zone change, and we look forward to discussing our text modification afterwards. I don't know if you want to wait also on Mr. Goucher. That is the other point.
Sorry, say that again?
I'm not sure whether the board wants to wait on Mr. Goucher's response from DEP.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the commission, I'm John Gedz. I'm president of Primrose Companies. I just wanted to add a couple of things.
Your address, sir.
I'm sorry?
Address, sir.
My office address is 1425 Noble Avenue, Bridgeport. I just felt that, you know, sitting as a, you know, listening, that I should add a couple of, you know, points to this whole thing. And at the previous meeting, I gave you a history of what took place. You know, I understand the concerns of the power company, obviously. But the power company's stationary, and it's been there forever. And it's my, the dollar that I'm, you know, proposing spending, and I, you know, I know what's involved. As I had indicated before, this whole process started about six years ago, when I met with Caswell's Board of Directors, and I analyzed, and back then I said, "This is nuts. Can't have, you know, the development go further and yet have this..." It has nothing to do with, you know, it has to do with the fact that you have a transfer station which has dealt with various types of materials, many of them hazardous. And even though it currently has ceased operations, it doesn't mean that those operations won't start again. The individuals that control the property, they have a history. And their history is that they don't give up on, you know, what they want to achieve. So when I finally structured an agreement with Caswell's people, I said, "Look, I will do this, but under one condition. I have to reach an agreement with the adjoining property owner so that that operation ceases to, you know, to continue." And the deal I structured was that the moment we would be able to get, you know, the zoning, that all lawsuits would cease, would cease, because there's current lawsuits by the city, by everybody, and we would implement a program to do the environmental cleanup. We already know, we have all the various site assessments. We know what's involved. We know that we have to deal with the Department of Rails, with the, you know, the crossings. So there's a lot of moving parts still have to be achieved. But the fact is that if the zone change takes place, and the tax amendment takes place, then regardless of how long it takes for all of the other approvals to happen, that operation ceases and will no longer be able to, you know, restart. And that's what's important. Now, I understood that by doing what I was doing, that we would be developing adjacent to the power plant. And, you know, we developed preliminary site plans where massive berms were, you know, were created alongside the property lines between the power plant and this site, and with the trees and so forth to create a buffer. The buildings are only four stories. The parking is underneath, but because of the grades, it just falls, you know, the building elevation facing the river is five stories where everything facing uphill is only four stories. And the buildings were oriented, and you'll see for the next, you know, part, you'll see the, you know, the proposed renderings, they were all set up so that they face the water. But the only thing I wanted to make sure that this commission understood is that the power plant has always existed. It existed when Caswell was developed. And just because it's, instead of being, you know, 100 feet away, it's 500 feet away from Caswell, it's still within, you know, the same area. It's not going to change. And yet people, even though they, I've heard through this hearing process, you know, some various, you know, complaints and concerns about odors and so forth, but for the most part, all I heard was that they love it. So, you know, they've dealt with, you know, some odors and so forth, the same way they've dealt with a train going by. It's, you know, it's a commuter line. And yet it goes right by and honks its horn and, you know, so forth. They've learned to deal with that. What they've never learned to deal with and refuse to deal with, because it's part of the court his, you know, court history, is the transfer station or, you know, even though it's called recycle, it's basically was a transfer station, that, you know, the operations, they fought. The city fought, the state has fought. And the thing is, you know, it's still in litigation, it's still in lawsuits. So that's the only points I wanted to make sure that this commission understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to rebut anything that was said? You'll have your chance after anyone from the affirmative side wants to speak again. Seeing none, you have a right to rebut what the applicant has stated.
Thank you. I was trying to be very cognizant of your three-minute rule, and I do appreciate it. First and foremost, I want to make clear that what we're talking about here is a problem for Devon Power if a residential use is directly abutting them. What that does is it changes the air modeling parameters that they have to go by, it changes their safety and security concerns. If you have a four-story residential building looking down on a power plant, they have concerns. They have concerns about having residential children and whatnot right next door and what that might do, again, from a security standpoint. And as I said, there's also concerns that other new regulations would be imposed on them that would impact their ability to operate 24/7. And the other thing I wanted to rebut that the applicant presented deals with their fiscal impact analysis. In my, and again, I put this in our memorandum, but it's ill-founded and it's incomplete, and I'll tell you why. The undercurrent of that fiscal impact analysis is a suggestion to all of you that if you don't do what they want, you're going to get an affordable housing development on this property that you can't control, that will be able to escape any kind of zoning regulation. That is far from a foregone conclusion, and I'll tell you why. As the applicant admits, the HDD is an industrial zone, and there's an exemption under the law for affordable housing in an industrial zone where your regulations prohibit residential uses in that zone. That's what your regulations do. They try to say that because you allow hotels, that becomes a residential use and you lose your exemption. Well, that's not true. There is no precedent to support that position. Indeed, I've cited to you a Superior Court case directly on all fours that goes the other way, and says hotels are not the same thing as a residential use, especially where the regulations prohibit residential uses. Now, keep in mind, when you define residential or dwellings, you talk about them as a single housekeeping unit, right? That means that they've got a bedroom, a living area, a kitchen. Hotels are not that. So I don't want you to be concerned, and I heard you, Mr. Sadi, your concerns about their fiscal impact analysis and how the affordable housing development would negatively impact the city. I just don't want, again, without further analysis for you all, to be concerned that if we walk out of here today without changing the zone, you're going to end up with a, you know, a six-story apartment building. I think that's ill-founded. The other thing the fiscal impact analysis does not do is it doesn't offset all of its supposed benefits with the negative impacts if Devon is not permitted to continue its operations untowarded. They are a significant taxpayer as well in this city, and there is no allocation in there for what might happen if they have to either truncate their operations or not expand and keep up with their current operations. They're also an employer, right? And they supply power. So there are numerous immeasurable ways in which Devon supports the city, and none of that is acknowledged in that fiscal impact analysis because they simply don't appreciate the impact that could be, fall upon Devon if a residential use is located directly next door. Again, I would not be here tonight if this concern was not real. And I'm not the energy expert, but I can tell you that they are very, very concerned. As I said, we filed a notice of protest because they own more than 20%, in fact, it's about 37% of all of the properties surrounding the area to be rezoned. This is a significant problem for them. And so, again, I appreciate you listening to me, and I will sit down now and address the tax amendments when they come up. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant has the last word.
Again, we're not threatening an 8-30G. We have come here as a partnership, and I'm sure that Devon is not threatening to close down their power plant to move out of town either, at the same time, even though you could maybe interpret that too. But under the regulation, we have a height restriction of 120 feet under the existing zone. So if I wanted to build a 10-story hotel there, adjacent to Devon, I would be able to do that ostensibly. And if I did an extended-stay hotel that has a kitchen unit, a dining unit, a conference, it would have ostensibly, people could live there extendedly, almost as a residential component there. So that would be permitted under the regulation as it now exists, and they seem to be able to operate under those existing circumstances with 120-foot height restriction and extended-stay hotel uses allowed. I'm set.
Thank you. Any reason we should not close the public hearing? Do we need to wait for the DEEP to come back and have that be able to be discussed outside of the board?
If you want to hear their results and be able to discuss it, then you would need to leave the hearing open.
Is any member of the board opposed to leaving the public hearing open? Okay, we will keep the public hearing open and await response from DEEP. Now, does the board like, would the board like to discuss this matter now or wait until we have further information, have some time to read what the Devon Power Plant Attorney has presented, and research into our plan of conservation development as it relates to this project? Mr. Grant?
I would agree with that. We were presented with information this evening that I think we need to go through and think about and revisit this project. Also, I have a question for Mr. Solkas. Since we are not, basically, we're keeping this open, items five and six that propose changes, would they also need to be postponed?
I don't think they necessarily have to be postponed. They can make their presentations tonight. You just wouldn't be able to take action on them because to take action on the regulation change, you would need to have the, well, actually, you could look at it independently if you wanted to. You could, because they're two separate applications. If you, in fact, wanted to change just the regulations of the WDD to what the applicant's proposing and not even change the zone of the neighboring property, you could actually do that. So I would continue with the hearing tonight, and, you know, if you want to vote on it, you can. If you don't want to vote on it, you don't have to and wait for, you know, the conclusion of the public hearing that has been held open.
Yeah, well, okay. My direction on that is, basically, I'm not in favor of any of the proposals, changes, but if the rest of the board wants to go through them, they can.
We have the interested parties all here, so I would say that the public hearing is, will remain open until our next meeting, and we will hear the next item of business, which is proposed changes to City of Milford zoning regulations, Article 3, Section 3, 22.4.2, minimum yard and open space requirements, three buffer strip for the ICD zoning district, proposed, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. That's postponed. So we're, yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Proposed zone change, Article 3, 3.1323, special uses, 3.13, three building requirements, and 3.13.4.3 accessory uses, multiple family dwellings in the WDD zoning district. Proceed.
Again, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jeffrey Gordon, President of Cottis Spodeen Associates, 263 Boston Post Road in the town of Orange. Obviously, what we have here is hand in hand with what we're looking to do on this particular piece of property, but also being mindful of the possible implications town-wide. We have, if you look at the dates on the amendment, you can see that we've gone at this a few times, we've met with staff, and we've had some dialogue back and forth, some suggestions, although not necessarily an endorsement, but some input that we've tried to deal with here. Basically, what we're looking at is the proposed text would be about height, and that the height of the building would go to 60 feet, average height as determined by the grade plane in your definitions. We also have spacing. We had put down that it would be equal to or greater than one-third the sum of the facing walls. In this particular case, buildings that we're looking at here that might be 60 feet tall would have to be 40 feet apart. 60 plus 60 is 120, one-third of that is, they'd need to be a minimum of 40 feet apart. We put in the section about facing walls. The rationale behind that is if I have a building that steps back, much like, you know, in an area where you want to get some light into the ground, the first floor might be a little closer, but then the upper floors move farther back. So that's why we put the term facing walls in there. Doesn't have to be in there, but that was what we felt was appropriate. Then also the habitable floor area, we have gone up to 100% or FAR of 1.0, but no more than 20% of the lot would be occupied by mid-rise buildings. This is a term of art that's already in your regulation, although staff pointed out that maybe you would do well to define exactly what you mean by that. But the point being is that we're talking about pushing up, not out. We're not sprawling out, we're looking to go multi-story. Now, the density of the dwelling units, this is something that would really only apply to parcels that are industrial parcels that have been changed to the waterfront design district. So other areas in town where there is additional waterfront design district, existing developments would not be able to benefit by an increased density. They are what they are, and they would not be able to increase. The height and FAR goes up, but the maximum units per acre and maximum bedrooms per acre would be, as is currently, except in parcels that are rezoned from industrial to residential use. And as has been brought out, you get to control what properties get rezoned from industrial to residential use. If you don't find a realistic or compelling planning reason to rezone something, then you don't rezone it, and then that trigger for height, for higher density, doesn't take place. The existing parcels that are HDD, excuse me, WDD parcels, they are unchanged. The parking requirement for the WDD, that would allow for one- and two-bedroom units, a more restricted parking requirement. Conversations with staff are such that, you know, there are areas in town where you might want to revisit your parking numbers. I'm sure that is an issue for another day that you could spend a lot of time on, but obviously, if I have a 200-unit development with a parking structure and surface parking, my parking number per unit could be lower than if I am down somewhere in Devon Center with a six-unit development, and there's a lot of tight on-street parking, you're going to need to make sure you have enough parking on-site and not to spill over. So different areas of town should be treated differently. We're not looking to reinvent all your parking regulations. We're just talking about the waterfront design district. It would not be on existing approvals, it would only be approvals going forward in 2019. So those are some simple changes. We went from probably three pages of changes down to a very, very abbreviated, simplified I took a look at what Mr. Solkas's comments are. I don't think that there's anything that I really am averse to in that. I just say that while you do affect all WDD zones that are not included in this application, you are not increasing the potential that they're going to tear them down or rebuild them with 42 bedrooms per acre, because it would not apply to them. Thank you.
Anyone else presenting for your team? I'll invite you up in a second, sir. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Sadi?
Thank you again. Good evening, Mr. Gordon. First and foremost, we don't have in front of us a diagram that you have of the picture. Is that submitted as part of the proposal? Because we don't have this part of the record is the point.
Right. The only thing I'm basically saying, we had asked for permission to go forward with this without an actual site plan application. I'm just trying to demonstrate to you what these changes could impact.
Well, it says it's a tonic sure residential development, Noggettuck Avenue, and it looks like it's eight to 10 stories tall. Is that what we're looking at?
No, it's four stories tall.
That's a four, okay. But the point is, is that part of our record yet?
Do you want to leave that behind?
Okay.
We can leave it with you.
And the one thing that we don't have, and again, it's, there's a lot of paperwork here tonight, the actual proposed changes, have you submitted those to the appropriate authorities by the particular paragraph and the like of the regulations?
Yes.
Well, I guess the question is, there were changes made to the regulations that were revised November 30th, 2018. So is everyone looking at that set of plans? I mean, that set of regulations? It should have been in your package. I know it was distributed in your package.
If it was in the package, we should all have it, yeah.
Just making sure, because that's, that will be the document that you'll be working off of.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Yes?
Just to Mr. Solkas, I heard what Mr. Gordon said about it not affecting all the WDD zones, and you and your said that it would affect all of them, so I'm curious as to which it is.
Oh, would you like my answer? Yes, Mr. Solkas, please.
Okay. Well, I'll just jump to that part of the report. The addition of the language "exception," industrial parcels rezoned to residential uses shall not exceed a net density of 26 units per acre nor 42 bedrooms per acre is of concern for the following reasons. If the regulation and zoning district change is approved, an HDD parcel is a WDD parcel. That's just the way it is. Zoning regulations have to be uniform, and the parcel history and former zoning designation, which may or may not be known, should not be used in determining compliance with current regulations. We don't do that anywhere. Different properties have different histories. Whatever the zoning designation is, they get to take advantage of it. You can't say in effect that, oh, we're going to change the zone, we're going to change the regulations, but it only applies to this property here because it was industrial. That's a spot zone. You can't do that. The proposed regulation change will affect all WDD-zoned properties that are not included in this application. Other WDD zones are found on Orin Oak Road, on the Long Island Sound, bordered by Noggettuck Avenue, East Broadway, Joy Road, Monroe Street, and Nettleton. So that's a problem that, you know, staff finds with this regulation. I mean, you can, you can put a clause in there about the amount of parking, saying, gee, for developments after a certain amount of time, they can provide less parking. You can do that. We haven't done it here in Milford, but it's been done in other places. But when it comes time to actually develop a property, you're not, you're not looking at the history of any property. It is what it is in that zone.
Thank you. And would you like to give your perspective?
Yes. First of all, I'm just surprised to hear the term of art, spot zoning. That's kind of an antiquated term that is misused all the time because a spot zone is, there's a legal spot zone and there's an illegal spot zone, which is why nobody really uses that. uses that term of art anymore. If I want to put a 10-unit-per-acre development in a one-acre zone, but it's residential, is it really a spot zone when it's still a residential use? If I want to stick a gas station in the middle of a farmland in the middle of nowhere, maybe that would be the kind of spot zone that would be, would not be wanted, especially if I didn't let anybody else do it. The point here is that the plan of development talks about adaptive reuse. It talks about things of that nature. So what we're talking about here is industrial parcels rezoned. That's an adaptive reuse. That's in your plan of development. That term is utilized in there, that, it also talks about flexible zoning. That's what your plan of development talks about. So we're, I mean, your plan of conservation development. We have used these terms before in other communities. Maybe it is new to you here. We've also done accesses and frontages at certain points in time because at certain points in time, there's takings of land which affect frontages, it affects locations and things of that nature. And that would affect uniformity, but sometimes it's not of anyone's own making. We don't think that there's any problem with uniformity because anybody who wants to come in with an industrial parcel and ask for a zone change can do so. There's no prohibition upon that. You have full control as to whether or not to rezone an industrial parcel to residential. So there's no lack of uniformity there because anyone with an industrial parcel can ask for that. So that's why I wouldn't agree with that, that's all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I want to agree with Mr. Gordon. He's absolutely correct. But the problem is the regulation. We're not talking about the plan of conservation development. We're talking about the regulation. He's putting in an exception in the regulation that says you can develop this property in this particular way as long as you were in a previous industrial use. That's not what the regulations are about. We're talking about the uniformity of the regulations. If you are in a WDD or an HDD, wherever it's located, you get the benefit of those regulations. Your history of what you were doesn't come into play.
Understood. All right. Now we will, if you're done, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Franklin Pelosi, 365 Main Street, Watertown, Connecticut. I'm a land use attorney, and I'm speaking on behalf of Caswell Cove as well as the applicant. And I support the application and I support the interpretation that Jeff has provided with respect to the ability to carve out only industrial zone that is converted to the WDD being under the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like, would anyone else like to speak in favor?
Yes. Dottie Bateman, 632 Pope's Island Road, Caswell Cove. Very much in favor of it. I'm sorry, a lot of people left, but I assure you, every single one of them were in favor of this. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Grace Bernstein, 627 Pope's Island Road. Been there for 13 years. I go up and down the water in my boat. I see the area that you're talking about. And it's really kind of a dad's disaster, what it looks like now. But I cannot imagine seeing a recycling plant sitting there as well. And I know you're going to be able to see it from the water when you go by, but a beautiful, maybe even a high-rise would look beautiful there. And I cannot imagine, a lot of these people, and all due respect to the people who have come up to talk, they don't live there. They live in Hartford. And it's a totally different, totally different land over there. It's, this is paradise where we live. And I really would hope that you'd like to keep it that way for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Taylor, 1431 Windwood Road, Milford, Caswell Cove resident and Association Board Director. Once again, I don't want to waste a lot of your time, just therefore would like to echo the previous comments and say that I support the petition and hope it will have favorable consideration by the board. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed?
Good evening again for the record. Carrie Olson, on behalf of Devon Power LLC. My principal office is 185 Asylum Street, Hartford, Connecticut. We also have an office on Church Street. And just for the record, I do not live in Hartford. In fact, I grew up in the suburb of New Haven and used to come to Milford for all the movies because it was the closest multiplex cinema when I was growing up. So I'm dating myself, but I'm very familiar with Milford. Be that as it may. We're talking about the text amendment at this point. And again, I don't know that Devon Power takes as much of an issue with the text amendments except for the fact that because they're so concerned about a residential use next door, the more intense that residential use, the more likely they're going to have a problem. So I think, you know, in looking at the proposed text amendments and looking at them in conjunction with your existing zoning plan, you're talking about really overcrowding the land. You're talking about negating any reference to the RMF 16 zone. You're talking about doubling the height of permitted buildings. You're talking about nearly doubling the number of bedrooms per acre. And you're talking about reducing the required parking with absolutely no criteria for doing so. And so, all of these things are obviously of concern to Devon being in a butter. A couple of other things I wanted to say. I just want to echo as another land use attorney what Mr. Sulkas has told you about spot zoning. Call it a term of art if you like. It sounds to me like what they're trying to create is a floating zone, and they're trying to do it by just slipping the regs into the WDD zone. But I'm telling you as a land use attorney, I fully agree with Mr. Sulkas. I think you'd be in trouble. Because anybody who has property in a WDD zone is going to say, I get to do it, too. And that means that you have to look at your other WDD zones, like the Milford Apartments over next to your open space. They could come in and say, okay, we're going to revamp the whole area and we're going to put in, you know, four-story apartment buildings. Maybe that's okay with you. The point is, you have to think about that. You have to think about not just what's going to happen on this one site. The other thing I wanted to bring up that's of concern to Devon when it comes to the intensity of the proposed development, if the text amendments are approved, is the access issue to this property. I don't know how familiar you are, but the basic access to this facility is an eight-foot wide crossing over the railroad tracks. They're going to need approval from the railroad company, which, by the way, is probably going to be very difficult. But then beyond that, their access is easement access. Again, narrow easement, limited access. So I don't understand how you're going to put 210 units on this lot and have safe access. So again, from our perspective, it's the density that's being proposed. And for that reason, Devon Power is not in favor. I just wanted to confirm, David, because I didn't realize it was going to be too separate, our notice of protest actually is addressed to both applications. Do you want a second copy for this file or are we okay?
We have digitally that was sent to us, then we made multiple copies. So you, just by stating it in the record, will make sure that there's a copy in both.
Thank you. And so in concluding, we ask that you exercise your legislative planning hat discretion and deny both the text amendments and the zoning map amendment. Thank you.
The applicant has last word, but as, I'm sorry, the, oh, go ahead.
Again, Franklin Pelosi for the applicant. I'd just like to state that it's the position of the applicant that the uniformity requirement discussed by your staff would be satisfied by including that only formerly residential, I'm sorry, only formerly industrial zone property would be subject to this regulation. I think that satisfies the uniformity requirement and would not be a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to leave this open as well so that if there's any information that we find in our own research that we want to address to this specific topic, we'll be able to do that.
Mr. Chair, just a reminder, you cannot do your own research. This is the forum to collect information. If there's additional information you want from either me-
No, I think I can, I think I want to review the plan of conservation development and see what, what I feel applies from what both the applicant and the supporters and stuff have said. And so that's, that's what I'm talking about. Thank you, sir. Mr. Grant.
Just want to make a comment. As I stated before, both these proposals for changes I'm not in favor of, but I would like to say that the attorney for the power company actually put my concerns into very good words.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Yep, Mr. Sadie.
Thank you. Through the chairman to Mr. Sulkas, I didn't find it in my packet, so maybe we can get the proposed change out to us before the next meeting.
Talking about the latest version of the regulations?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I think, I think we still have some business to take care of, so please be quiet on your way out. And thank you, everyone, for your thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you as well. Are you guys ready to move?
Seeing none. Regulation Subcommittee, Mr. Grant.
We had a subcommittee meeting just before the regular meeting. There are several proposals that we will be submitting at the next meeting for the board to review and hopefully approve to pass, to out, to go out to the various locations to approve.
Thank you. The next item is approval of minutes from the 11-2018 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Chair's report, I have done. Staff report?
I have done this evening.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn. Moved.